It's called an order this April 2025 meeting, the Board of Education. The first item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a question?
I move.
Your second.
Second.
Home in favor? Uh, the second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Do I hear a question?
So move.
Your second.
Second.
Home in favor?
Board members. It's nice to have a really nice day outside because we got a lot of people waiting for us to see you. I really appreciate everybody being here for this. And I know why you're here. Of course, they're probably not listening to board business, although you're always welcome. But it's to do what we most enjoy doing and recognizing our teachers and recognize our students. So I want to start today with a recognition of the Teacher Leader Cohort. A lot of the accomplishments of what our kids are able to do are facilitated by great teachers. And we go through a process every couple of years where we have a cohort of teachers who want to do additional leadership-type things, training, preparation, how to be a better teacher and lead amongst your colleagues. And then some ended up aspiring to do other things like different positions in the system or other places or aspire for leadership positions. So it's really been a quite successful venture for several years. And leading that way has really worked much in the prevailing. And I want to ask them just to talk a little bit about this cohort. We're going to introduce all of them. So when we call your name, just come up here, give your certificate, and we'll get you a live photo picture.
Well, we are thrilled to honor this cohort. I feel like it's a class of students, but obviously adult students. And so the teachers in this great range from, you know, elementary to secondary, teachers from all content areas, instructional partners. So it's just a really interesting group because you really see them not only grow as leaders. Obviously, many of them are already leading before, but just continue to grow as leaders where they are. So lead their colleagues, lead across our district. But they also connect and form really cool relationships with each other. So I'm just thrilled that they finished the cohort and they'll be sharing their leadership opportunities this Thursday. So we're excited about those. And we are just happy to honor them tonight.
Yeah, and I would just say a lot of the things that we have implemented across the district in probably the last five to six years have been teacher-leader projects. And so it's very, it's so neat to see their influence filter across the district. You know, they might be an elementary teacher, but then they impact secondary instruction or secondary schools or procedures. So it's been an honor to spend time with them. It's fun to work with leaders who may not aspire to be administrators, but are already leading where they are and to pour into them and just to see where they take what we plan and take to the next one. So very fun and an honor to work with them.
So I'll call out. Call out. And you guys coming up and must line up across the way. Get a good picture. Connor Kemp. Lisa Rice. Emily Hall. Anne Pickens. Okay. Andrew Burris. Anna Hickson. Holly Peet. Kaylin Randolph. Shannon Stewart. Carolyn Adams. Haley Davis. Day Rowan. Sarah Woodruff. Haley Lushington. Leslie Payer. Ashley Hicks. And Tucker. Coach Little House. Katie Harvey. Lori Post.
Got it.
Harmon Sullivan.
She's back.
She's back. Ashley Tilford. Cindy Lou, Gritle. Haley Mark. Marsha Fahy. Asher Smith. Leah Smith. Hey, Liz. Dan Kirk. Well, I can tell you, Board members, they have already made their mark in our schools. I can see a lot of places I know were doing influential leadership-type things long before they ever got into this one. This is a stellar group of teachers. They represent a very good team. So congratulations.
We get to roast. That's good, y'all. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
Yes. Quarter following up, I'd like to make a couple comments. Because I hear over and over again, people around County, around state, that our schools are the crown jewel of the community. And I think the reason there is obviously is teachers like this who are willing to go above and beyond. They make our schools better, they draw people to our community. And there are reasons that we just aren't actually comfortable and trusting the most precious things we have, sort of children, to the teachers, to our schools, knowing that they will be better off having been in the classrooms and on the fields and in, you know, having spent time with those teachers. And we appreciate what they're doing, going the extra mile to become better teachers and having better in that regard for our children and students. So thank you all.
It is invaluable. Sorry, everybody didn't get to hear that, but that is so true. And the fact that you would willingly go through something you don't have to do. It's not part of classroom construction or required trainings, whatever. It's just willingness to do it. Every time you have a cohort, you fill it up. But you just continue to want to do that. So really good. So thank you for saying that. Appreciate it. We have some students here today who have been a part of something called the Academy of Craft Training. That's a question to come up if you're in that group. ACT. Some different versions of ACT. These guys have, are y'all seniors this year? Seniors.
Yeah, two seniors.
Two seniors, okay. Couple of seniors have a graduation coming up after a couple of weeks. This is before the high school graduation. The Academy of Craft Training is a program that's been in place for several years. We typically send 12, 14 or so students or hopeful to be a part of it. And it meets somewhere in the Abidale area down there. And what they do is go through a really quite extensive and rigorous amount of training or trades, construction trades in particular. And that can tell you a little bit more about what your interests are. But each month, the Academy of Craft Training chooses amongst our students and all the others in the area that come to the program a student of the month. And these four guys have been named a student of the month at some point this year. And I wanted to throw the recognition to what is a hidden gem of a great program for our students. And the benefit it has is just tremendous in that industry. So I want you to introduce yourself, okay? We know you're a student of the month. Tell us what your interests are with ACT, and we'll go from there.
I'm Matthew Alexander, and my, I guess, the specialty I do is interior, exterior finishes. So kind of like drywalling and framing walls and more interior. I guess finishes for cabinets and stuff like that for buildings.
I'm Cooper Cook, and I'm in the H-Back program at the academy. And I'm planning on working my way up to be a construction manager.
I'm Ben Omanza. I do building construction at Academy of Craft Training. And I guess my plan to just do work versus steel.
I'm Carson Gentry, and I'm in the welding program. And so I do a lot of ironwork and I plan on finding a job in that.
Yeah, and I don't think any of them have trouble finding jobs. The cool thing about the graduation in a couple of weeks is the same. Which two of you guys are seniors?
The Congress.
All right. So they get offers for employment at their graduation. So they're able to sign a letter of intent essentially that they're going to start working right out of high school. It is a tremendous program. And that four from our high school to be students of the month. This is a large program and a lot of folks. So it speaks really highly of what we're working on. Anybody got mom or dad here? Sibling? You have a mom and dad? Oh, there's some. Do you think you guys want to say about the program?
I just want to say that the Academy of Craft Training really is a hidden gem. And we are promoting that program at the high school to get more kids involved because they do a great job with our students. And when I talked to the education director at the Academy of Craft Training, he loves the Best Navy Hill students. And he wants more of our students to come in this program because he knows that what we talked about with our teachers, what a great job they do in classrooms every single day, and that they prepare our students for when they're juniors and seniors. And they have to go through a rigorous interview process to get into the Academy of Craft Training. And we work with our students to get them ready for those interviews. And we just feel like that this is a tremendous program and that our students, we have 12 students in the program this year, and four out of our 12 were employees of the month. And so that is a great percentage of our students that go there every day and they work hard and they do their best. And they go up there for the first three periods of every day. And then they come to Best Navy Hills High School for a fourth period through eighth period. So they are dedicated and they're going to be great employees one day.
Who knows, being a good wrestler and an H-Back technician, there's got to be a good combination. That does something worth that. Anybody else who comes in today?
I've said thank you to the school district for, maybe this part is a part of the school day. I didn't find it, it's a good fit. It's been a great commission.
Yeah. Really good. Much as proud of you guys. Thank y'all. I appreciate it very much. All right, so who's up?
Farski Rebellette.
Rebellette, see the color. These are, these are the Best Navy Hills High School Farski Rebellettes. And they're your producing. And I'm Charity Jones with us. Been with us for a long time, the Rebellettes. And done a great job. Could you share a little bit about this team?
Yes, so like you said, my name is Charity Jones, and I am the dance teacher at the main campus and the Farski coach. And so this year, the Farski team competed in team performance and in the game day category. We've always competed in the team performance category for as long as I can remember. Even back to a student taught in Visavia, oh so long ago, they did some team performance then. So it's always been a thing that we've done. And that category is kind of a combination of kick and jazz and palm and hip hop all in one dance. It's like four dances in one. And so this year, they placed second in that category, in the large Farski category for team performance. So they got silver medals. It was a thing that NDA did this year for their top three teams. They gave them a gold or a silver or a bronze medal. So I thought that was super cool. We also competed in large Farski game day. So that is, I wouldn't say a new category for us to be in. Farski has competed in it a few times. JB also competes in it or has competed in it as well. And then we kind of jumped back into it as a Farski team last year. And the competition has grown so much that this year, the game day category was split into three separate rounds. So there was a prelims, a semis, and a finals. So we made it through all of the rounds, but that was not an easy task to get through all of the rounds. And so they ended up placing 11th in game day, which we were very proud of because it was a huge category. And from one day to the next, we really didn't know if we were going to get to do the dance again. And just like cross your fingers and hope for the best. They're a great group, six seniors and then nine. Nine juniors. They're not all here today. We had a couple of conflicts, but yeah, this group of seniors, I taught when I was a JB coach. I was their coach as they were freshmen. And then they skipped a year and then came back to me as I graduated to become a senior. So we're proud of them. They do a good job.
Let's give them a introduction.
I'm Wesley Tarn.
And you're a junior.
And I'm a junior.
I'm Corey Jackman, and I'm a junior.
I'm Emma Manners, and I'm a senior.
I'm Sophie Nixon, I'm a senior.
I'm Dana Hanks, and I'm a junior.
I'm Lenny Ann Ramey, and I'm a junior.
I'm Emmy Passman, and I'm a senior.
I'm Sadie Chavers, and I'm a junior.
I'm Mary Beth Phillips, I'm a junior.
I'm Alexis Rudolph, I'm a junior.
I'm Riley Overstreet, I'm a senior.
I'm Bella Henderson, and I'm a senior.
And so there's Meredith Robinson and Kate Koshat and Meredith Robinson. They're also juniors, and then Harper Griffin.
Congrats, champs. Board members, help me while they're walking down.
Well, just congratulations. It's a lot of work. Y'all need to sweat a little something.
All right. If Board members, since this is our JB Rebellette squad, they are fresh hops and big-time accomplishments just a couple of months ago. Share your progress today. Would you share a little bit about this team and what they accomplished this year?
Well, so much. So the junior Farski Rebellettes have competed first time ever in the team performance division, which team performance means there's palm, jazz, kick, and hip hop. So essentially, you have four small dances in two minutes. So it's lots of high activity, very demanding in terms of the body and how we're moving and performing. And we competed for the first time, first time in the category with three other teams. And so yes, we did a really good job. National champions. And then the other medal they have is the silver second place medal. They competed in jazz category. And this was our third time competed, competing in the jazz category. First year, I believe we placed fifth. Second year, we placed, excuse me. We've improved each time we've competed in the jazz category is what I'm saying. And so this past go-around, we competed against eight other very, very traditional teams and very traditional dance programs. And we did a really great job placing second amongst some really wonderful dance teams because so are we. And yeah, that's why we're wearing the national champs jackets and medals. We're very proud.
I'm Caroline Covington, I'm the captain.
I'm Lily Kate Diffrin.
I'm Morgan Stevens.
I'm Mary Carmen Nathan, I'm a third captain.
I'm Piper Licerson.
I'm Celia Jordan, I'm a third captain.
I'm Mallory Ritchie.
I'm Catherine Crowe.
I'm Mary Nix.
I'm Janine Kennedy.
I'm Ava Ish.
I'm Riley Aron.
I'm Ashlyn Faust.
I'm Ella Booth.
I'm Emma Deloitte.
I'm Megan Duzel.
I'm Julia Parker.
And I'm Lani Blankin.
Right.
And Caroline's our captain.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, perfect. Hold on, we're going to go to the front. So let's see if we just pause right here. And then we'll just proceed down the middle. You're good. Perfect. All right, now it's the front.
Another, another part. Yeah, let me get you to turn this way. So the group here now is representative of our All-State Band Program at the high school in Pizitz. And Lee Singh is one of the directors and says to talk about them. But just continues the tradition, I think, of the impressive work in our arts programs. We've heard from bands, of course, and we've got band here about to have a theater in a few minutes. So Lee, tell us about this group.
I am, All-State Band is pretty much the highest honor that you can achieve as a middle school or high school band student. And it's, it's pretty awesome to have so many students represent Visavia, Pizitz. In our district, it's very competitive. There are eight districts in Alabama. And when you look at the numbers every year of how many students audition for Allstate, District Four, our district, will have two or three times as many students auditioning as other areas. So it's very competitive. And for our middle school from Pizitz, we had eight students, nine students make it. And today, we have with us been Luke Brown, who plays euphonium. Charlotte Yother, who plays flute and made first chair, so in the state of Alabama. Alex Dow as a seventh grader placed first in the state on alto saxophone. That's what we call total domination. Tucker Hicks on bassoon. Alex Liu, first chair on clarinet. And then we have AV Thompson, which is special to note that AV this year, as an eighth grader, has held first chair in our state for three years. Sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, on string bass. And then y'all, do y'all want to, do you want to speak for yourself? I told him I would speak, but I don't want to take the words away from our high schoolers. Uh, which is pretty awesome to see the trajectories and y'all were in sixth grade where you are now and super cool. Okay, where do you go?
I'm Nico Moreno, and I play top piano player at Allstate Jazz with clinician Mike Flip Gordon, which is just a dream.
Iola Palmer, I play bassoon.
I'm Randy, I'm a clean flute. I'm a first charge of support band.
That's awesome. Very competitive. So our All-State Band representatives, and this is not all of the students who placed an Allstate Band, but it is a testament to so many hours of work behind the scenes to be able to hire full-time positions, one of these great experiences, represent our band programs.
Yeah, and I do want to point out some of the, some of your folks at Pizitz may have been a part of the presentation this year. The Alabama Music Action Children's Association, I lead the band in an incredible performance that represented us in state association, which was really nice. And I would think you all there.
Yes, all of the middle school students here.
Congratulations, All-State Band.
Theater day.
I think Jamie's here someday, or she is today.
Well, I want to take a picture of her on the face, sorry. But Blake. Blake Franklin and Finley Stevenson are two students that were chosen to be keynote emerging artists of promise at the Southeastern Theater Conference, which is one of the largest conferences in the country. They only pick four students to be keynote emerging artists across 12 states. And this year, we've, we've had four students that over the years that have been selected as keys. But this is the first year that we've ever had two keynote emerging artists of promise. They were, they are, when you are awarded this, they pay for you to go to Baltimore or to wherever the conference is, and you get to meet all of the keynotes. But for us, the biggest deal is you get to audition for over 300 colleges. So Blake performed in front of 300, shoot, 60 seconds in front of 300 colleges. And Finley had, I think, five minutes in front of those. And together, they got more than 75 callbacks to talk to colleges from some of the top schools in the country. They represented very well. It was really wonderful for some of the recruiters to look at me and say, if these are yours, we want more. Bring more to us. So they're wonderful representatives of our school and also just wonderful young women.
Well, I guess without saying, our conarts program is thriving and doing quite well. Next month, we will have some athletic recognitions just to be a nice example to finish the year of the opportunities all our children have to succeed in different ways. So thank you, everybody, for coming today. All right, we'll jump into the orders of business today and our financial statements first.
Good afternoon, Board members. I have provided the March 31st, 2025 financial statements and check register for your review. As of March 31st, 2025, we have collected 94.6% of our budgeted annual tax revenues compared to the 102.5% that we received last year at the state. Although our collections have been slower this year compared to last year, I do expect that we will reach 100% of our budgeted tax revenues. It'll continue to trickle in over the next six months, usually about a half a million per month. In March, we earned $151,415 in interest income on our investment treasury suite. Our total expenditures and transfers out in the general fund as of March 31st were 55.6% of the budget compared to 53.7% last year. All things being equal, we should be at 50% of our budget in the sixth month of our fiscal year. And we're a little above that due to some annual payments that we've already made. Our monthly financial statements and check registers are available for viewing on our website upon board approval, and all bank accounts have been reconciled as of March 31st, 2025.
Board members, I approve. I recommend approval of financial statement for March 2025.
And for the superintendent's recommendation to approve the financial statement for March 2025, do I hear a motion? So move. Your second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. Item six is consent items, and I recommend approval of those items that include disposal of board property, in-state overnight, out-of-state overnight field trips.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the consent items, including disposal of property in in-state and out-of-state field trips. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Our first order of business is the moment we've been waiting for, the financial audit. And Jason, our brother from Carr Riggs and Ingram has worked for us for several years and is fantastic and does a fantastic job. And I really takes, does the work seriously, and I appreciate his efforts on this. Jason, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Preben. I promise you, we will not go over every page of the report. Listen, I can if you would like me to, but more than likely, you probably want me to hit the high points. So I'm here this evening to just go over the board's 9:30, 24th financial statement audit. Again, to kind of talk about a few of the higher-level things and certainly answer any questions that you may have. As you know, and I kind of go over this every year, you have an audit opinion. And it's roughly about five pages in. That opinion belongs to us, and everything behind that technically belongs to the board and the school system. We're doing what we call We're doing what we call an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the opinion that you want. And our audit opinion kind of goes through briefly some of the steps and procedures we have through in a financial statement audit. We do a lot of testing, recalculating, confirming. We also set materiality level, you know, financial statement audit isn't like a forensic audit. We're looking at every single item. We have, you know, a lot of testing, verify things, but you know, it's a different perspective than necessarily looking at every single item. We would be here all year, not that we don't like Ms. Brown, but anyway. So that's sort of the, gives you an idea of what we're doing and what the opinion is that we're giving. If you look, I think, and you should be familiar with this, but on page 10, and remembering this is at 9:30, 24. On page 10 is the, is the fund financial statement. And that's really where you live, mainly is where you budget. And that's the thing Ms. Brown talks about every meeting is where you stand as far as financials, like she mentioned a minute ago. And at 9:30, 24, the board ended the year with a positive $1.9 million basically net income in the general fund. And that's a good thing. And that's what you want to do because that's continuing to build up your fund balance. And I know that's always, you know, a closely monitored thing because that relates to how many days of operations that you have. And you certainly won't have above 30 days. And I think we're about 1.7 or thereabouts at 9:30, 24. And I think we've sort of maintained that going forward. So that's certainly where you want to be. If you really get down into weeds, and I know that the state has their financials and you see those and Corky has heard, but remembering this is just a snapshot in time. Our fund balance at 9:30 is smaller than what you probably see on your internal statements, but that's because of the way that we do accrual counting. So we have a very large accrued salary. So in other words, if you close business on 9:30, you owe the teachers for what they've already worked and you'll pay that in early October. The state, when they do their calculation, they'll add that back to fund balance. So if you felt accounted to and wanted to look at that and add it back or compute that number, you would need on our statements to add that back. So it's really just a timing difference between the way we do external financials and internal financials. So I just wanted to point that out. Couple of other things, we also do a lot of internal control testing. That's not something that we necessarily give an opinion on, but we really rely on that for our financial statement audit. And in that, if we have any findings, you know, we report those and we didn't have any this year. That doesn't mean we may not in following years, because that's based off a lot of sampling, but we didn't have any this year. We also have what we call a single audit. And that's where we do your federal wards testing. And this year it was on child nutrition. And we did that and have any findings in that area also. So again, you know, that's a testament to the good work that your employees are doing in finance and those related areas. And also at the very end of your booklet, there is a relatively long letter that's called a required communications letter. And in that, and I won't go through each thing, but it talks about some of the things we, again, deal with within audit. And in that, there's a lot of estimates that are baked into these numbers. Pensions, other post-employment benefits, those kind of items. There's a lot of estimating that goes on with actuaries that we have to rely on related to our audit and related to numbers in the financials. This letter goes through that with a lot of other things. You know, we didn't have any disagreements, you know, with accounting matters, that type of item. But again, I won't go through each, but it's very informative if you wanted to look through that and see, you know, some of the things it talks about internal control and those type of items. I think that's pretty much it from a very, very high level. But I would certainly entertain any questions. And like I said, I could go through more in detail if you would like me to. I certainly want to thank Ms. Brown and the finance staff. And audit is very disruptive, but they always have everything ready. We can come in and do our thing and get it wrapped up and report back to you. So anyway, so thank you, Ms. Brown and all the finance department for getting things ready.
I just appreciate, I work in accounting, so.
Courtney, thank you. Board members, no action on that. This information for you. And we promptly start the next round of this, probably in the summer. I think we've already signed a letter to intent with Carr Riggs. We'll move ahead of that and we'll get going again soon. All right, item B, I recommend the board approve the 25, 26 parent student handbook.
Per the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 25, 26 parent student handbook. Do I hear a motion?
So move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Board members, item C, I recommend the approval of the 26, 27, and 27, 28 academic calendars.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2026, 2027, and 2027, 2028 academic calendars. Do I hear a motion? Do you have a second? All in favor?
Board members, this gives us three calendars out, which is really good. I want to congratulate you for doing this. This was part of gift, asked her to give to us before she retired. They had one more year into the calendar, Nick. So we've got three now and that's good. The calendar next year, just for your information, has listed on the Friday we return August 1st, Institute Day. That's when all of our group gathers. And it is only still the professional development day. We're just going to move institute to Monday, which is a district professional development day and actually buys the school back a little bit of time. We're just trying to make that work a little bit better with all the things they got to try to do. So I'm actually not necessarily on it because it's still a school PD day on Friday, a district day on Monday. But our institute will move to August 4th this year. All right. Item D, I recommend approval of a job description for accounting clerk.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of a job description for accounting clerk. Do I hear a motion? So move it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Board members, this is not going to be adding a position in our office. We have a vacant position now in payroll. Courtney is redesigning that position essentially to take on some duties on the accounts payable side as well. So that's what you'll be considering here.
All those in favor?
Item E, I recommend the board approve the bid from CT General Contractors LLC in the amount of $699,621 for renovations to the Vesavia Hills Elementary East Old Cafeteria.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve a bid from CT General Contractors in the amount of $699,621 for the renovations to Vesavia Hills East Old Cafeteria. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'll make a comment about this after our next item. Item F, recommendation is to approve the letter of intent to execute a contract with CT General Contractors LLC for renovation project for the old cafeteria at Vesavia Hills Elementary East.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve a letter of intent to execute contract with CT General Contractors for the renovation projects in the east for the old cafeteria. Do I hear a motion? So move it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Board members, we took this bid this past Thursday, so not really enough time to turn a contract around, but it does, this allows us effectively to instruct the contractor to start with purchases of materials, mix and middles, et cetera, because we're going to be needing to move as quickly as we can on the project year in the summer. Mr. Boone has looked at this?
Yes.
All good?
Yes.
All right.
All those in favor?
I'd like to take a minute if I could to talk a little bit about East. We don't have this on the agenda, the chart with the all actor personnel. I'll discuss a little bit more about that. All right, recommendations to approve the personnel items as submitted.
Per the recommendation to approve the personnel items as submitted. Do I hear a motion? So move it. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay. Before I get into some comments about this, Coach Miles is with us and may not be with us again before she retires. And but I, but I asked her if she wanted to make any comments about, she did. So just as a matter of privilege, I'll see if she would mind offering up some comments here.
Yes, I would love to. Again, I can't thank y'all enough for everything that y'all did for me. The past four years have been just phenomenal. It's been, it's been a joy to work with everybody. But just like all of you know, any successes that we've been able to achieve is because it's a we that has been involved in the last four years. And one of the most instrumental people in the process has been Laura Casey. Laura may be one of the smartest people I've ever met in my life. She has Vesavia blood running through her, through and through. She has everything it's going to take. And I've already told her, if it doesn't happen, I'm going to be way down. She's going to take it to another level. And I'm very, very excited about what is fixing to happen for our school system. And she is by far, hands down, the best person to take this system to another level. She's a visionary. She's going to be great. And I can't thank y'all enough, again, for everything you've done for me. But what you'll continue to do for Laura and her staff, two of the staffs here, we've got several head coaches here, so that speaks volumes. And again, thank you so much for everything.
Coach Miles, thank you for saying that. And Laura, we're excited about all of the people who are coming in, the new teachers, the transfers, but based on Coach Miles' statement and everything we've known about you, Laura, at least from the last few years, we're excited that you're going to be taking over on June 1st. So thank you. Thanks for being here.
All right, before we wrap up, just a couple of comments about East. Last year, I presented to the board demographic study we completed to look at enrollment patterns across the system. And over a 10-year period of time, what we were generally expecting to see is a bit of a decrease over that 10-year period of time across the board with enrollment. And that is holding true, generally speaking. I think we will have a little bit of a decrease in our K-5 enrollment next year, with the exception of a couple of schools. But the one that's out of balance to what we were projecting is at East. This year, East has 724 students as part of their official enrollment. As of today, they have 808. So we're having to think more aggressively about how to manage that situation. The reality is the grades two through five, average enrollment's 126. What we have seen this past year is we have 164 kindergarteners. I believe right now, we already have 144, I believe, enrolled for next year. So we anticipate going up. And Cindy's going to do everything she can to make sure we're able to house all the kindergarteners that are selling for East. That is our intention fully to do that, if it's possible. But the reality is we have no more classroom space with that number of kindergarteners. And part of the reason that we asked you to approve the project tonight is that that does add a couple of classrooms additionally with some office spaces to help accommodate this growth. But at that point, we're maxed out in terms of our capacity. So that leads to an obvious question for the board over the next year about how we want to address the growth question in East. And the fact is, that school is almost twice the size of Cohava Heights. And I don't think we would necessarily be thinking about a scenario that evenly divides elementary schools. That's not possible. But occasionally a board does have to contemplate shifting zone lines or looking at ways to better balance that. We don't have to do that this coming school year, but I do think that that's a coming conversation for the board to have. And too bad if you scotch. Any questions around that?
Yeah, I appreciate you making us aware and making sure that we became aware of what this looks like going forward and even decision points that may be coming up. We're also appreciative of y'all's leverage to make sure that this year, everybody who's currently down there will continue to go with East and we can make decisions that need to be made in the next four months.
She's got a good plan.
Is anybody here for a public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?